Okay, since it's 6:35, we're gonna call the plant, um, meeting of the Webster Planning Board to order. First order of business is approval of the minute, meeting minutes from November 29th.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the minutes are not ready. They'll be ready for the next meeting.
Okay. That makes that process a little bit easier, doesn't it? Are we going in order, Ann?
Yep.
Okay, next is, uh, Chapter 91 Waterways Simplified License Application for 33 Wawhila Park Road.
Yes, this is a Chapter 91 permit that came through the office and has already been to conservation. It's a new permit, uh, for a new dock, and, uh, they've already received their order of conditions.
Two years ago.
Beg your pardon?
Two years ago.
I think so, yeah. This is Mr. Wilson at 33 Wawhila Park Road. So, this is just a, uh, opportunity for the board or public to make comment.
Did everybody have a chance to look at the application? It's basically just for the dock?
Mm-hmm. Is it a new dock or pre-existing?
I'm sorry?
Is it a new dock?
New dock, new house.
New house, okay.
I believe. You wanna explain the, how the system's supposed to work for these, Ann?
Yes, um, you're, for your newest board member, um, Ms. Fritz, uh, these permits are a mass DEP process, and the first thing you do when you want to get a Chapter 91 license, which has different levels of requirements depending on what you're doing, for something like this, is a simplified license, you can submit a drawing, they, um, require you to start the process and then immediately go to conservation. Oh, this thing's been booting off again. Um, they immediately go to conservation where they're either required to do a notice of intent if it's new construction, which this was, so this went through that process, or if it's an existing dock, then, um, it would supposedly smoothly go through what's called a request for determination of applicability. So, tho- those are the two processes that they go through, and then, they go back to the state and carry on with the state's permit. But they want it to be vetted locally. Um, part of that process is, um, notifying the planning board, the board of selectmen, and the zoning board of appeals. For the zoning board of appeals, the applications would be put forward to them if it were, um, anything that was in violation of zoning, or something that might trigger a zoning review. Uh, for the most part, these are just residential homes with either existing docks, or they're looking to build new docks, and the state would like multiple opportunities for people to come to a public environment and make comment. And then, all the board does is offer it up for board comment to the public, and then, a memo gets submitted to mass DEP saying yes. The board had a meeting on this day, this is who was present, if there were comments, that would be noted.
And the assessor gets the comment too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, everybody gets an opportunity, this gets circulated all across.
So, originally, you could fulfill the application, and then it would come back to the town. The state's now changed the process, so you have to fill out a pre-application, come to the town for conservation, get a determination, and then go back and finish your application. Unfortunately, our conservation commission doesn't understand the process and can't fulfill it, but that's another issue all on itself.
It's not a, it's not an easy process. I've already tried it, and I'm a pretty, pretty intelligent person, and I always have a hard time navigating through it, you know? I'm not going to conservation, but just doing the application.
It's a, yes.
It's not an easy...
I selfishly ask because I'm in the middle of the process myself.
All right. I'll be right behind ya.
Okay. But, yes, the state has changed the way they do it a little bit, so, anyway. Does anybody have any comments on this particular application? Anyone?
So, this one will still have that stipulation of no rental type thing that we've been talking about every single one?
That is standard language that we put in Caroline, just for every, to make the state aware that the, the board has taken a position that rental, renting your private dock out for, for private profit, sure, you can bring your jet ski down and your boat, and you're gonna give me $50 a month or whatever, that, that's a, oh, no, no, that's a commercial activity that the town...
Fifty, try, fifty, that, that's a bargain, try like 2,000.
That's why people are doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need a motion here, Ann?
Um, so, I'm gonna note, no board comments, and any comments from the public?
That's it.
No comments from public. Um, so, your motion would be direct staff to submit a memorandum to mass DEP.
Set stating that there were no comments from the board?
No comments from the board or the public.
Do I have that motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. All right, your next, um...
Next item, a special permit application for the installation of electronic signboard at Mike's Crunchies and Munchies, or Munchies and Crunchies, sorry.
I provided everyone with a copy of the draft decision. Um, as is the standard process, the, uh, I'm gonna scroll through this on the screen only 'cause it's being very finicky, and it keeps kicking me off, so I'm gonna keep moving the mouse to keep it from booting us off. Um, so, um, the first portion of the, um, the decision catalogs, who was present, in this particular case, only four members are eligible to vote, um, that's Mr. Leframboise, Mr. Dossler, Mr. Moran, and Ms. Cody. Uh, this requires a supermajority vote in order to receive approval, which means all four members have to evoke to approve it in order for it to receive approval. Um, the applicant was made aware of the fact that there might be a supermajority issue, and he decided to proceed and go forward. So, those are the four members that are eligible to vote. And it catalogs, you know, when you had the meeting, when it went out to the others, all that good stuff. Um, the exhibit listing will show you all the documents that were received and entered into the record from the time the application came to the office to the time the hearing was closed. Um, and here are the findings of fact, which outlines what was proposed, what was discussed at the hearing, um, these, a lot of these come right out of the meeting minutes, and then the specific findings get into a conversation about how this, um, application is properly before the board, it's a special permit, electronic message signs are allowed at this zoning district by special permit only, um, only one message sign is allowed per property, this is cataloging what's in the zoning bylaw. And then, the, um, motion to grant the special permit with conditions, which you can vote against if you do not agree, it's always best to have a motion in the affirmative, and then to vote against it if you choose not to. Um, the conditions are outlined very specifically what's being approved, based on what was in the application and reviewed during the hearing, the size of it, um, you know, and then, this goes through all of the conditions for granting that are in that section of the bylaw. Um, display time, static images, it needs to go off 30 minutes after the close of business to customers, a lot of times people close and it takes them an hour to clean up, but if you've closed your doors to the customers, let, the sign needs to go off 30 minutes after the close to customers. Transitions are very specific, um, and this is all based on the requirement set in the bylaw. Brightness levels, um, the special permit is good for three years, if they don't, um, exercise the right to install the sign within three years and the, um, the permit expires. Um, it's, this, um, special permit is specifically to this, um, property, to this, uh, business. If, um, he should move to another location, um, that, this permit is no longer valid, whoever comes into that next, uh, business location would have to come back to the board to utilize that electronic sign. Um, and then, all the other requirements, it has to go to the registry of deeds, it has to be recorded within 30 days, any modifications, um, would have to, uh, come back before the board in form of a new application, possibly, and, um, I think I have in here that the planning board reserves the right to review this in the event that there are problems with, see, now it's scrolling on my screen, but it's not scrolling there.
Just moved.
There you go.
There we go, is it going now?
It's just slow.
It is slow. Um, so, yeah, it is very slow. So, that's what you'll find in the conditions. These are all things, oh, yeah, the, uh, the approved sign shall not exceed a brightness level of 0.3 foot candles above the ambient light. This is all language right out of the bylaw. So, that is the nutshell of what's in this, what looks like a four-page decision, maybe the shortest one we've had yet in a while.
Yeah, listen to me. Is, is C10, that first, says 30 and 3, and should that be 30?
There we go, thank you, I'll make that correction.
Simple one. Or is it 33 minutes?
Three minutes, you're gonna be there with a stop.
Isn't the sign already up?
I'm sorry?
Isn't the sign already up? Thought I saw it up already.
Is it?
I think so.
So?
Sign off, please.
The sign, is it, are, it, is it already installed? The upper part, which is not a message board, it was installed, he's looking to install the message board below the existing sign that's there.
Okay.
And would it surprise me if something's been installed and not turned on before a permit? No. Nothing surprises me anymore.
Okay, and I'm looking for a, uh, motion to accept the findings of fact.
I'll make that motion, Paul.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to accept the findings of that F1 through F6, you can do that, is it due effect?
You can do that verbally, and again, the four people who, Cristela is not eligible to vote, and the associates either.
Okay. Motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, you need a roll, or we can just vote?
You don't need roll call.
Roll in paper.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so, the next set of findings starts at F7, it's off by two, so that would be F7, up, 7, 8, and 9.
Again, looking for a motion to accept the, uh, specific findings, which will be remunerated at 7, 8, and 9, is that correct?
I think your microphone's off.
It is, sorry.
There we go.
Sorry. So, I'm looking for a motion to accept the findings which will be remunerated, 7, 8, and 9?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second.
Who is the second? Kathy, okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we'll be looking for a motion to, uh, grant the, uh, special permit with the following conditions, C1 through C16.
As edited?
As edited. Reflects C10 should be 30. And were there any other changes, Ann?
I didn't see any.
Were changes? Was that the only edit?
It's the only change.
From C10?
It's the only thing.
Yeah, C10, yeah.
I'll make the motion. Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, to grant the special permit with conditions C1 through C16?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion or questions? Anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. And then, last one will be a motion to direct, uh, Ann to, uh, to draft the decision and sign on on behalf of the board?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Easiest one ever.
I know.
I could fix that, you know?
Please don't. Um, next is, uh, opening of the public hearing for, for modification of the site plan to add a second drive-through at the, uh, 128 East Main Street Burger King?
Yep, this is a continuation from your last meeting.
Okay. He's missing a microphone.
Oh, he doesn't have a microphone?
No.
Here, okay, okay.
That's all of them?
Yeah. Let's just give him ours, then.
Hello? Hi.
Steven Lefan with JSC Management.
I'm sorry, could you do it again?
I'm Steven Lefan, I'm with JSC Management Burger King.
Okay. Did you wanna go through, Ann?
Okay, I'll, I'll give you a quick update since your last meeting, you'll see that there are a number of exhibits that have been submitted, um, including, uh, today, these last three exhibits were submitted today, um, based on comments that Chuck had made during his peer review of December 10th. Um, Chuck and I had a meeting with, um, one of the architects from APD Engineering about the lighting issue. Uh, we talked quite a bit about, you know, what, what's happening on the site, and, uh, you wanna film it, or you want me to go ahead and... All right, yay. Um, the, the concern that, that staff had was, all the issues that Chuck had identified during his peer review had been responded to and answered, um, with the exception of the lighting plan. And, the problem being that this neighbor here, that's a residential use, and there used to be a fence that ran along across the top of this retaining. And, uh, we went back and forth with the architect engineer about the fact that the specifications that they had submitted from Samsung, was there any way for us to, to gauge the extent of the lighting put out by those signboards? Um, they could provide us with the kind of information that we felt the board should have, so, we asked them to go back and pull the specifications and submit, which they did, um, to show that the message boards could be dimmed if we should get a complaint in the office that they're too bright, um, you know, do we have, you know, will we be able to condition it, so, the building commissioner could require them to, uh, to dim them down if we're seeking complaints? Uh, another condition that we talked about was that if the board should receive complaints to reserve the right to revisit the site plan, particularly with the lighting, as it relates, adjust to that residential structure, um, and possibly require additional conditions to offset and mitigate any impacts, uh, that, and then I also suggested that we revisited three, six, and nine months over the course of that first year of operation, the boards are in full, you know, in full swing. Another condition I suggested was similar to, uh, what we just discussed, was that the boards get turned off at the close of business to walk in, or to customers ordering, and I think they operate until midnight. So, there are lots of ways to, to condition this in the absence of any real solid photometric lighting information about just that part of the site where you see the drive-through area.
Okay.
So, Chuck and I had that conversation, you know, with them, and, um, I'll let Chuck speak for himself, but I feel it can be conditioned in a way that is, you know, responsive to the needs of the neighbors while moving the site plan forward. Your options are to accept the site plan with conditions, or say, no, that's not good enough, and we're gonna deny it because we need solid lighting information.
I'm, I'm assuming that the retaining wall and the old fence were owned by the neighbor and not by Burger King?
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, I did find out, um, that, from Stratocash, which is, uh, agency that monitors our menu boards, and they are, so they're factory set, so, we can take a remote and change the brightness, the dim, you know, the contrast, everything, but I would have to contact Stratocash if we were ever to have to dim the lights, um, going forward, um, it's not something the crew can come out and turn it down, it's all corporate, factory set, so, that, just so you guys know.
Okay. It can be done, but it can't be done that easily.
Yeah, I mean, we take 'em out of the box, plug 'em in, and then, it goes through the cash register and out the door.
Okay. But you wouldn't have a problem in, in setting those conditions where if they did have to be dimmed, if we received complaints, you can do it?
Correct. Yes, it can be done.
Okay.
And then, the other, the other thing that we discussed with the engineer was the possibility of, uh, installing a new fence on top of the retaining wall, if the property owner, the adjacent property owner was agreeable to that, you know, if, if it came to that, if the menu boards were still too bright, um, you know, that would be another option.
We would, uh, agree to that as well, and also, the menu boards, um, right now, they're set at about a 15-degree angle, we can change the rotation, orientation of those more to the cars to try to avoid any light that would possibly be going towards the neighbor. Um, we can, we can go almost square to the cars coming into the drive-through, um, with the menu boards, which would decrease that light going across a parking lot or driveway.
Okay, so you do have some options to limit it going forward. Anything else, Chuck?
So, one other, one other item that the board should discuss, again, you get your, uh, stupid stuff going here, uh, the landscaping plan, uh, we asked them to, pursuant to the regulations, provide a landscaping plan, and they added three boxwood plants along the drive-through aisle, and that's just something the board should take a look at and see if you're agreeable to that, if that's what you're looking for.
Maybe.
Do you want the final?
The, the planning had up the floor, please, Karen.
This is the most...
So, you can see where, uh, you have the icon F pointing to the three, those circles, those are the three boxwoods.
And we don't comply with the regulation, is that...
Well, again, they're not, they're not reconstructing or installing, uh, parking lot, so, you know, as a part of the application, they do have to provide a landscaping plan, but it's not, uh, not specific as to, for, say, like, a parking lot.
Yes.
So, that's the landscaping around the...
Right.
So, we do try to minimize landscaping in that area because that is where the customers will roll down their window and throw out their cigarettes, we like to keep it stone mulch or anything that's not gonna be flammable, um, boxwoods obviously are small, but they do dry out sometimes.
Yeah.
So, I guess...
I would recommend, um, that you surround that with some kind of stone because we've all heard stories of mulch, you know, that a fireplace would have been flooded to...
Yeah, we, we typically like to use stone mulch, so...
Okay. And specify that too, just so that everybody in the future knows.
Okay.
Um, this is a unique application that the site plan, um, you will actually have two separate decisions for it because the modification of the site plan is one thing, site plans are valid for, um, three years, and special permits are valid for two, and the signage is your second decision you'll have to make, so, when you're ready to move on to that, I can, I can give you the rundown, you would ask for you to do an assessment on what's allowed by right in the package versus what they're seeking relief from.
Okay. So, did anybody else have any questions regarding this part of the discussion? Anyone?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to signs.
Okay, so, that's just great, the site plan, finding the package was something slightly different. Okay, so, having reviewed, having reviewed this, um, and actually, I went over this with the applicant, that's why they submitted a special permit application. Um, let's start with this, this is when you drive in, on the left-hand side, you see that, believe that, whether or not, based on what the bylaw requires, that is not considered the front of the building. The front of the building is the portion of the building in which people will enter into the structure, so even though this is theoretically the side, it's actually considered... Oh, no way. Okay. Um, so, the signage that's allowed there, that's in compliance, they can do that without a permit. Um, this signage is considered a secondary sign, and that's in compliance because it also is facing a parking lot, which is what's, what's required, so those two on the sheet are perfectly fine, uh, it's these two that become the issue. Uh, this is a third secondary sign, each company is allowed one secondary sign, this is the second one, and this one facing the rear property line is not allowed by the bylaw at all, so, it'd be up to the board to determine whether or not you would allow this additional signage, I think the site's got some unique circumstances, you know, we're standing in East Main Street facing this here, um...
What's, what's currently on that building where the drive-throughs boards are?
There is a big, uh, there's a big, it's a double...
Double-sided cantilevered sign that shoots out of the building, about four feet.
Okay.
You can see it from both directions.
It's on the drive-through side?
Uh, it's on the street side in the middle of the building, over the, uh...
Over the window.
That side, okay.
Over the window.
But how about the back of the building where the drive, where the message boards are, is there something on the building there now?
No.
Okay.
But you can see it coming down the road.
The, the one that hangs out on the other side, you can see?
Or the back of the building, I guess, where we want that one.
Okay.
Yes.
The street side.
So, one of the side, what's not shown is that the two new boards that you're considering as part of the site plan will be back here as well, so it will be two stations for cars to stop and place an order, uh, which will have that particular signage plus this one as well.
Yeah, if you don't mind?
That's, that's the side along the driveway, right, where they're gonna be driving through?
Okay.
Yep.
Facing that residential.
Don't breathe, all right? Do you have the back of the building?
Yeah. The one, no, the one that faces the house, the side that faces the house.
No, that's the side that faces the street. Do you have the drive-through now? That side of the building?
That you, that side the car's on?
Yeah.
Uh, let me see if I can pull it up.
Okay.
I think the new one's less intrusive.
I'm sorry?
The new one is less intrusive because it's just flying on the building.
I would, I would think so.
I have put some pictures in the project file.
So, from the operator's perspective, these are standard signs that Burger King is going to everywhere, or is that...
Correct.
Okay.
To give you an idea, these are the, the types of, um, um, menu boards they're talking about, um, and again, so... again, so. Sorry, Captain, I'm trying to work tech guy.
I think screensaver keeps kicking in.
Nice, nice pictures, Anne.
I want to go there.
I know.
Looks cold in here.
No, it's not letting me connect at all.
Okay.
Are you ever allowed to have two entrances to the building? Like, so that parking lot has, like, a side entrance, like, was shown, but there's also a parking lot on the narrow end of the building?
Oh, this is, I was thinking that was a sign, not just a...
There was a door there, would that be considered a...
So, there's nothing on that side of the building?
The front of the building as well?
That's nothing. And then they're going to put those signs, like, along the wall?
Yes.
Or, not quite. Well, that is a sign. Those are menu boards.
They're hamburger, where that.
Where that's...
Okay, and then those, how much bigger are those menu boards, the new ones compared to the old?
There's going to be four of the building.
Four? That kind of looks like it's sections, yeah. Like, little sections on it?
Right, and right now, this one has, like, two. So, there's one, and there's the other.
So, you're talking...
And there's a section there.
Yeah, to the right is a door currently.
Yeah, I know.
This model, this pavilion model actually has a door there on some of them.
All right, so the question being, and it's a good question, this facade which faces the parking lot does have a door here.
Currently.
Currently. But in this new design, there is not going to be a door there?
Correct, but we could add one if it would help with the signage. There is a parking lot there as well.
No, because both of these signs are in compliance with the bylaw in terms of the amount of signage allowed on both of those facades, both of the secondary signs. The problem is, is that the bylaw only allows for one secondary sign. So, you've got your, your primary and your secondary, or if you want to call this your primary and this your secondary, they still are in compliance. Those aren't the issues. It's these two, these two signs. And a special permit is designed to be, you know, special circumstances and considerations, so.
Is this one on that top picture, is that lighted?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all lit. They're all backlit.
Yep.
They're all backlit, okay.
And that's the one that's going to have the signs on the side?
Through the chair, in relation to the sign that's there now, the brightness, how does it compare, the, the back's, the rear-facing sign compared to the sign that's sticking out of the building?
How's it compare with?
With brightness. Are we talking like-for-like change, or?
Um, no.
Is it going to be dimmer, or is it going to be brighter?
They're illuminated the same. The square footage of what's there is a lot, it's a bigger mass. This is spread out.
Um, yeah, that was kind of my second question. So, what's the dimensions of the sign that's there right now?
I'm estimating it's four by four.
Off the, off, that's sticking off the side of the building?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, that's, that sign sticking out, it's at least four by four, and it's, it's centerlit, sending light both ways.
I think he has to have, be able to advertise the business to traffic coming, uh, yeah, in this case, it'll be going east to west. I think it creates less of an intrusion than it is more aesthetically pleasing to have it, a sign that's not sticking out.
That's the same comment that Kathy just made, that it would probably be less intrusive to the neighborhood, to the neighbors.
I think the only problem you have with the sign that's on the back of the building is you're already adding a lot more lighting in that area with the two new message boards or two menu boards that are going in, and the additional lighting generated, you know, won't be much, is, was not included on the lighting plan. That's why the condition for the site plan is essential to being sensitive to the neighbors in that, you know, you're going to be bumping up the lighting values in that area a lot more than what's existing there. So, that's just something to take into consideration.
What size is that one?
On the back?
Yeah. That one there?
Four by?
Four by four.
Four by four.
Oh, okay. But there is one menu board there now, right? On that side, was two?
Yeah, but they're further back.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think I take issue with that side more than any other side of the building, just because of the lighting.
Is it possible to visit this like we would with the menu boards, three, six, nine-month review? I mean, we can take a sign down, down the road, if it is, if the neighbor is complaining about it, the lighting?
Well, the nice thing about it, you can adjust the lighting, you know?
We can't adjust the lighting in that sign.
Can't adjust the light on that.
Burger King one.
I have a word, and the other way around, let's see how the lighting goes with the two menu boards, and if it's not offensive, then they, they can come back and you can reconsider it. They can ask for a modification to determine without having to go through the whole, the whole.
Could I put the sign up and not illuminate it?
He wants a sign. He wants the sign.
Well, the branding's important to us. It's a, without that cantilevered sign, unless you know it's a Burger King, you might go buy it without Burger King on the corner.
Anne, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What I'd like to know is the three-month, six-month, nine-month, is that, you kind of like, no one's complained about it yet, but if they start to complain, then you want to revisit it, or?
Yes, you reserve the right to revisit the, you know...
No one's ever complained to, to date, but you just have that?
The neighbor did come in and spoke specifically to the traffic issues, not so much the lighting.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure this fellow here is very true to his word. It's always the next person who comes behind him when the sign's up, and, you know, I can't tell you how many signs I drive by just on my way in that are illegal, that people break the rules. Not necessarily the intention of this fellow, I'm not disparaging him. I think that, you know, the sign is specifically not allowed in the bylaw, so it is special circumstances. I think you'd be pretty hard-pressed not to recognize Burger King and go buy it from, from a branding perspective, particularly in light of the fact that there's this, which I think is a much nicer looking person. The signage is always a very personal thing, but I think that's a lot better than what's there now. And the overall look of the new design is infinitely better.
Is Burger King listed on the plaza sign?
No.
You're not?
No.
How come?
I don't know.
You have to pay extra?
I think if it wasn't illuminated, it might fly a little better than illuminated.
But their standard signs are all going to be the same, so.
Well, he mentioned that he could do it without the lighting.
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions regarding signs? Anne, any other questions or comments?
I just have one more question.
Go ahead, Jason.
For Mr. Eaton. Would the height of the sign off the ground, would that affect how much light spill over is caused by it? So, if it was dropped lower a couple of feet?
Well, in this case, I think we're more concerned about what lighting is going to enter the windows of the adjacent house.
Right, so I'm, what I'm saying is if you, if you lower its height, would that decrease that risk?
Well, I think, I don't know, I don't know exactly what the elevations are of the house windows versus the building, but for a branding sign, completely want that to be as high as possible. So, I, I guess I can't really answer that question. I don't know if it would mean yes, as far as like the, how far out the foot candles would go, or would they diminish? Yes, the higher up you are, further they would go, but with the orientation of neighboring windows there, I don't know how that...
Okay.
Might make things worse, but, you know, now it's like right in your eyesight.
And in all fairness to Burger King, there's an awful lot of light spillage off of that entire area onto this residential park. This is not a quiet suburban neighborhood, bro. There's a lot of light out there, so.
Yeah, they get bombarded from across the street as well as here, yeah.
Yes, they should.
I think they should look into seeing if they can get on the signage for the plaza. That way, when people see, they'll see from both sides.
Does that count, or is there total signage if it's on the plaza?
That one's already...
The existing, the existing pylon, what they call a pylon sign, they can, they can change, swap out faces all the time.
Yeah.
Now, is there a fence up there right now, or is the fence going to be installed?
Came down.
It's gone.
Yeah.
So, do you think if they put up a fence, that would kind of alleviate a lot of the problems with the sign?
Yeah, yeah, that's a possibility. I mean, that's up to the board. If they, that if the retaining wall isn't owned by the butter, I mean, you could condition it, it would satisfy some of the concerns for the site plan, but for the special permit, you could require the applicant to negotiate installation of the sign, I mean, the fence.
I, I can't imagine they would want to do that, but you certainly don't want to be responsible for a fence that you put up.
Not on top of a retaining wall.
On top of somebody else's wall that could, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't feel right telling, asking for that, but that's...
I'm surprised they don't have a fence for safety, though. People probably want to wait off that...
Actually, by code, they're supposed to have a fence on the...
Yeah, you can wait off the wall.
Unfortunately, the homeowners of the neighborhood owns that, so...
Right.
You're conditioning something that impacts...
To condition something on somebody else's, yeah, I don't, I don't want to go there.
So, the applicant has made a proposal that put up the sign without lighting?
Yeah, I could do the sign box, not illuminate it, not energize it.
I mean, I have no problem doing that.
Look, I, I don't have a problem with it either. The problem I have is what Anne mentioned, is that that'll be fine, and then three months from now, that somebody else will come through and turn it on, right?
Can't we make it part of the special permit, that it's?
You could make, you could, you could specifically call that a non-illuminating sign, that there's no risk of somebody flicking that switch.
Yeah.
So, illumination is the issue. It's also, and again, a special permit is, should give special consideration. The bylaw doesn't allow signage to face the rear property line, but that's your target, if it's a board, to make that decision based on unique site circumstances, and I think there are some here. But to install something, and based on illumination, I, I have a hard time believing that that switch won't get flicked one night, but I think the neighbor's going to go to hell with this and go click.
All right.
Well, come take your light bulbs.
Do they have signage that doesn't light up? Do you know if Burger King has signage that doesn't illuminate?
Yeah, we do have branding that's just signage. It's not illuminated. I mean, this right now...
That size?
This is ordered with illumination in it, but, I mean, from the construction aspect of the side of it, we'd have to tell the electricians not to run power to the sign, and the sign guys, I mean, the electricians are what tie it in to energize it. Sign guys are just going to...
Just order the box and have it empty.
Mm-hmm.
That'll...
Yeah, you can condition that if, if the board wishes. Is there, because this is the public hearing, is there any other questions or comments from anybody?
No.
No?
That would be my big concern, is having that illuminated. I know if I was in that house next door, I wouldn't be happy either.
Especially with no fence, you know?
Yeah.
Well, we, Chuck and I did testing across the street years ago, and, and the whole street is so bright at night, I can't imagine it could make that much of a difference, but, I mean, who knows?
It is a little closer.
I mean, anything you can do to try to help the people next door, I can understand, but...
It's a little closer to the house, too, so it could be a little direct.
Yeah, it's going to be pointy right there, so. Okay, if there's no other questions, we can move to close the public hearing. Any other questions? Jason, you good? Anybody? No? Okay, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, close the hearing.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in
favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, entertain a motion to direct Anne to draft a decision. What, two decisions, or just?
Two decisions.
Yes.
Make a motion to Anne to draft the two decisions.
Second.
All those, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we will do that at the next meeting.
Well, I'll take a look at what the, you have between, you have 90 days from today to draft a decision. The disadvantage that the applicant would be at is that Kathy can't be present at the January meeting. If, which means four people would be making the decision, if one person votes against, then it's defeated for the signage. The site plan is only required to require three, three votes. So, it would be up to, if you want to wait until the February meeting, you could do that. It's to the, it's to their advantage in terms of getting the number of votes that is required, so.
And your construction schedule is?
As soon as we're approved, we...
Oh, you haven't started, or?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to wait until February so that Kathy can be present to have the discussion and vote on the two decisions? You, you want to start with the site plan maybe in January?
Can we use the associates if Kathy's not here?
We have to declare that at the opening of the hearing, which was a couple meetings ago, so. Whenever you're going to use an associate, you have to, you have to declare that at the opening of the hearing.
So, why don't we declare it every time, just in case?
No, it's just the first time we have to.
You have to do it then.
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
Do you want to do the site plan decision in January and then the special permit in February?
Yeah, it makes the most sense.
Yeah, I think we can do that. That's what the applicant's good with that?
Yep.
It's not going to kill your schedule lines? Okay?
No, I guess plan on starting in March anyway, so...
Oh, okay, great.
That'll be fine.
All right, so let's move to the February meeting. I mean, the signage will be at this February meeting, and, okay.
Perfect. Makes total sense.
Great, thank you. We'll see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
So, this is, this was on the agenda from last time. I don't know if he's, he, is ... No? No.
We'll wait to hear from them again. Next would be the odor complaint update for...
Cheerleaf.
30 Worcester Road.
Um, that was intended to be just a staff report. They are submitting the weekly reports, which we are submitting to you, and they're available to the public.
Yep.
As needed, or as, as requested. I can, I can put those updates on the website if you feel that it's helpful to the public. They're email updates. There's nothing really proprietary in those, that, and it's all public information, so if you like, I can put those weekly updates on the website. People can see them.
I think that would be great.
I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, it certainly doesn't hurt. Any more information you can get out there so that people understand that they're actually working on it.
Right.
And they won't be calling you in, you know, just going to check the website. That'd be great.
Put it over the website. They are working on it. I do know that the Cannabis Control Commission has very strict regulations about odor emissions from the facility, so we can continue to explore that as needed. I think they are making a good faith effort. We continue to get information from them. I do know that Price Chopper has filed a verbal complaint with the county administrator's office, which they've encouraged to put in writing because that's essential to enabling us to work with the Cannabis Control Commission. But if you've got any questions directly about those odor updates, you can get those to me, and for the next meeting, you know, I can ask them questions, ask them to respond. If you don't want them to have your direct email address, you can funnel that through me. me.
Yeah, I just think it's important that we keep it out there because it's terrible.
Yeah.
It really is terrible. On the days when it's cloudy and it's rainy, it's 100 times worse. Today, it wasn't bad.
That real foggy day, though.
Oh, my God.
The foggy night, I was driving on 395, and it was hovering right over.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's crazy how bad, I can't believe it could be that bad.
It's surprising, huh?
And that far away. Yeah, but, okay. Next, board up, your update, Anne, anything?
That's Chuck. Do you have anything? Two things. One is for Curaleaf. I had contacted them in regards to the as-built plan, and they still had to do the sweeping, removal of sand from the paved areas.
Yeah.
So they had indicated they're going to get that done either tomorrow or online set. The other, the other thing I have with Hoya, they're still blasting at Hoya, and they're now blasting on the eastern side of the site, this side away from the existing building. So they still, you know, they kind of have the grading, you know, set for the new addition, but they haven't started work on the new addition.
It looks like the rock removal went deeper than what they had originally planned.
Yes. That's why I was surprised that they were still blasting, because it seemed like they had blasted what they needed to for the site plan.
Right.
So...
It's like they blasted for the next addition.
Yeah.
They took on a big area back there.
So I don't know, you know, maybe they found that that rock was not stable enough on that side or something?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, but yeah, it does look like they've kind of gone beyond what they had originally intended.
The site looks good, though. It looks like they're ready to go.
That's amazing.
They're doing good. The erosion, sanitation controls are in good shape.
Yep.
The site's basically a hole, so nothing can escape.
They built a huge tracking pad after the first failure, so that's good. Looks great.
That's it.
That's it.
For your January meeting, I hope to have in front of you the final plan sets that were approved for Hoya and for United Medical Waste. We gave them 45 days to get the plate set in its entirety to you for your approval and signatures. And the as-built plan for 30 Worcester Road, Curaleaf, is in, and I'll be getting out my big scary stick for five pedal with throw to get there, get them moving in the right direction, too. Those are the outstanding as-bills and site plans that need to be approved by the council. I'm hoping January to make those happen.
Old, old Worcester Road?
Old Worcester Road. No, no movement so far. I am tracking their, their permits, it's only good for three years, so Chuck and I, well, I'm starting to keep track, and I'm going to include him on my calendar so he can see where some of these permits are starting to expire. So we prefer nothing more.
Okay.
I asked Anne about that today as well.
Okay.
What's old Worcester Road?
Oh, about Webster Sheet Metal?
Okay.
Go ahead. Down give it, she was going back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
That's it, somebody?
All right. Two meetings in a row, which is unbelievable.
Crazy, isn't it?
I know. Scary that it's this quick. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if nobody else has anything, other discussion items?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.